In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Board of Adjustment of the Township of Franklin has been provided. Board members, applicant professionals, and members of the public, please speak directly into microphones so that our recording secretary can properly process minutes. Applicants and professionals, please fill out the sheet on the table when you've completed your testimony. Would you call the roll, please?
Before we start, Joel Reese, Robert Shepherd, and Faraz Khan all asked to be excused this evening, just so you're aware. Sharabithia?
Here.
Richard Prokanic?
Here.
Alan Rich?
Here.
Gary Rosenthal?
Here.
Basim Verdas?
Yeah.
Michael Doherty?
Here.
Chairman Thomas?
Here. Bank of America, oh, I'm sorry, minutes. We don't have any minutes to act on.
No, sir.
Resolution, Bank of America, ZBA 2300011, we need a motion to approve.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, Sharabithia?
Yes.
Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
I was not at that one.
Okay. Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Basim Verdas?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Here. We have nothing formally under discussion. I just want to make the board aware, since we are dealing with applications and especially warehouses, if you aren't aware of it, the planning board passed a resolution to send to Somerset County Planning Board and the Senate Commissioners, asking the county to do a detailed regional study involving communities such as Montgomery, Manville, Biscataway, Down Brook, Hillsborough, and how we can more efficiently manage traffic produced by trucking from warehouses. Since we're all affected by these applications that cross municipal lines, it's sort of copied after one that Middlesex County's doing in southern Middlesex County. So, that's been forwarded to the county. If anything happens, it happens. If it doesn't, we tried, but at least I'll make you aware of that's in the works if you hadn't heard about it before.
Bob, there's also the resolution for the meeting dates. I was waiting to hear back, and I neglected to put it on there, but you all had it? Did everybody look at it, the meeting dates, on here? So, do you want to vote on it, or do you want to wait till next?
Insert.
I mean, next page.
Any objections to voting? Then we'll just entertain a motion.
I'll move. I'll second.
Rich, you should be second. Sharabithia?
Yes.
Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Basim Verdas?
Yes.
Michael Doherty?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes. Somerset Properties, ZBA 2300016, B1 variance preliminary final site plan with C variances, minor subdivision, in which the applicant proposes to subdivide the property into two lots and construct a 61,190-foot square foot warehouse, including seven loading stalls at 415 Weston Canal Road and 91 Cotton Tail Lane Somerset. Block 517, .02 lot 8.13 in the BI zone carried to February 1st, if anybody happens to be here for that. There's no further notification. And the first hearing, Venka Teswar and Padma Pamadhyavakalagada, I apologize if that's too badly mispronouncing the name, ZBA 2200024, C variance, in which the applicant proposes to construct a new two-story, four-bedroom, single-family home, 76 Battle Place Somerset, block 136, lots 1 and 2 in the R7 zone carried from November 2nd. No further notification, and you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lawrence Sacks, on behalf of the applicant, Vakalagada. This property is located at 76 Battle Place. It's block 136, lots 1 and 2. It's in your R7 zone. We were here a few months ago on this application, at which time we presented our witnesses, and at the conclusion of the hearing, there were some very good comments made by board members regarding possible revisions that needed to be made to the plan, and we've done that since that last meeting. And at the first meeting that we had on this application, Mr. Mark Lieber, who's seated to my right, our professional engineer and professional planner, gave pretty extensive testimony as to the surrounding neighborhood. I believe he introduced a tax map showing the size of the lots, our lot being comparable to most of the lots in the area. He also showed some photographs showing some of the houses that are in the neighborhood, and what we're proposing, according to him, would not be out of character in the zone. But notwithstanding, based on some of the comments and based upon some other revisions that we needed to make, we filed that with your board. We're here this evening to discuss those revisions with you. We also received a report from Mr. Healy, which we were prepared to go over. We eliminated one of the variances entirely, which was a lot coverage variance. So, without further ado, Mr. Chairman, I guess Mr. Lieber was sworn in last time. If you need him to be re sworn, certainly you can do that.
He still remains sworn under oath, and he's already been qualified.
Absolutely. Okay, so...
I'm the chair. I just wanted to interject. I'm going to recuse myself from this application, so I'm just going to...
Okay. That's fine. I'm familiar with Mr. Prokanic, and he may have a conflict of interest with me, so that's fine. I have no problem with him recusing himself. All right, so, Mr. Lieber, if we can talk about the revisions that you made since the last hearing, you could talk about the elimination of one of the variances and the reduction in the other one.
Hi, good evening. We were at the hearing on November 2nd, and the original plan that was filed depicted a house on the property that was about 20 feet by 60 feet, and there were some, you know, not so favorable comments as to the architecture and the layout of that house. So, we, that evening, had presented an exhibit depicting a house that had a footprint of 23 by 48 on the first floor, and then on the second floor, there was a one-foot overhang on three of the sides. The rear of the house did not have the overhang. And we explained that that would change remarkably the setback to Battle Place, which was previously, I think, only 25 feet, and then also the setback to Davis Avenue, if we had measured to the overhang, would be at 18 feet, but it was a much nicer shaped house. So, after that hearing, we had revised architectural plans drawn up, which were submitted, and you should have them in your file already. And consistent with that plan, I had submitted a variance plan that was revised November 2nd, which does depict, in fact, a 23 by 48-foot dwelling, again with the one-foot overhang on the three sides. Now, my original calculation was that that dwelling was 22% building coverage. Mr. Healy stated that you have to count the one-foot overhang above as part of building coverage, which would actually make a 23 by 48 first floor underneath a 25 by, I'm sorry, a 24 by 50 second floor. So, therefore, the actual building coverage is 24%, and the zone does allow 20%. The maximum lot coverage variance request, we did eliminate, so we are complying with the 30%. What I could tell you is, we did present information on the houses that are literally directly across Battle Place from this property, that we were maintaining consistency with regard to the prevailing setbacks on these blocks. And if you take a look at the architectural floor plan, you'll notice the garage is dimensioned 23 feet. I don't think it's practical at all to reduce that 23-foot dimension, because otherwise you wouldn't be able to fit the stairs into the house at the back of the garage. So, the only opportunity, then, to reduce this footprint any further, if you were trying to get down to a conforming 20% building coverage, would be to take it out of the width of the house, that 48 feet. And again, as you see the layout on the first floor and also on the second floor, reducing the width of the house would require a loss of over eight feet, so the building would be around 40 feet. The bathroom's only 10 feet, and the staircase, I can't really see reducing the size of the staircase, because you still need the same number of rises to each second floor. You look at the dimensions of the bedrooms, they're not in any way excessive, and the last thing I do want to state is, again, this house is the same size as the house across the street, which is also on a corner lot. So, I don't believe that the request for this building coverage variance is frankly even perceptible to somebody who would be passing by this property. It's a permitted use in the zone. We did talk about the statutory requirements for granting of a dwelling on a undersized existing lot, which I feel we did address those items. And other than that, I believe that the elevations that were provided are much more interesting architecturally than the original house, which I believe the comment was it looked like a railroad car. Again, you know, try to do our best to accommodate something that's fitting in this setting and not overly excessive.
And so, Mr. Lieber, just to, just so, I know you've explained the situation with the overhang. If we calculate that, it's 24%, but the actual base footprint of this house is really a 22% building coverage. Is that correct?
It is.
Okay. And the only way we can get it down to 20% would basically be to take off 100 square feet on this house, and is it your testimony that that 100 square feet would be almost the, the inclusion of the 100 square feet would be imperceptible from the street?
We'd have to lose 200 square feet.
Okay. All right. And in terms, there's an additional variance that we picked up with the redesign of the house. Is that correct? I guess the front yard setback, because this is a corner lot, originally was 20 feet, now it is 18 feet. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
25 is the requirement.
Well, 25 is required. We originally had 20, and now it's 18.
Yeah, and again, the reason is because we changed the shape of house to be an elongated rectangle to more of a proportional shape.
Okay. All right. A few other things. You put a, there's a sidewalk now from the front door? That was in, that was one of the inclusions?
Right. The door to the house has been moved from the corner to the center, and then I took a sidewalk to the driveway.
All right, so now we have a driveway leading from the driveway. In terms of stormwater, how are we going to deal with any stormwater mitigation here?
Again, last time we testified, we provided a drywell for the roof runoff, which would be fine.
Okay. And I guess all of the other comments in Mr. Healy's report, we can fully comply with?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I don't really have anything else at this point. Certainly, we're here to entertain any board comments, but just in summary, we did obviously take to heart the comments that were made. The house totally has a different appearance now than what it did initially. I don't think it looks like a railroad car. We really have dressed it up so that it is an attractive house. If the board will recall at the last hearing, Mr. Lieber did provide some photographs showing the houses right across the street of comparable size, comparable design. And again, you know, we do have some pre-existing nonconformities here with respect to this lot, that being the lot area, and the 9,000 required, and I think Mr. Lieber testified to this last time. We have 5,000 lot frontage, and then the front yard setback. One of the other requests at the last hearing was for us to contact the neighboring property owners to see if they had any interest, either under a buy-sell arrangement, to pick up any additional land. Those letters were sent by my office after that hearing. I received no response from either property owner.
Okay. Any questions?
So, are you, as far as the, all of the variances, are they C1 hardship situation, or is this C2 better zoning alternative?
We have both. You know, the hardship here is it's an undersized lot, but an additional hardship is it's a corner lot, and corner lots have two front yards. So, for the respective, you know, lot area, 5,000 square feet, where 9,000 is required, that's certainly a hardship. No other land is available. We tried to talk to the neighbors. They're not interested. We have an existing nonconformity with lot frontage on Battle Place. Again, you know, if we could do something about that, we would, but unfortunately, we have 50 feet where 90 feet's required. And then with regard to the front yards, while we're meeting the front yard setback on Battle Place, it doesn't seem possible, under any condition, to meet the front yard on Davis, because you would be left with a building that's, I think, 16 feet wide, which just doesn't seem feasible. Other than that, the maximum building percent lot coverage, which if you calculated it with the second floor, is 24%, I would say that's a C2 variance, just to be conservative, that, you know, would be rather uncharacteristic to have a house that is 20% lot coverage on this property, because that would severely limit, you know, the usage of that house. And I don't want to suggest that we should just build a house that's not usable. I think it's probably better off, as a project, to have a house that is practical and can accommodate, you know, a bathroom on the first floor, which wouldn't fit if we reduced the size of the house, as well as, you know, living areas that are amenable to a family.
Mr. Lieber, let me just follow up as well. Mr. Healy also alluded to relief under a C2 analysis, flexible C2. In that situation, we have to demonstrate that the benefits outweigh any detriments, and then obviously that it promotes sound planning. Right now, this is a vacant lot. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Obviously, it's being maintained, but in your professional opinion, as a professional planner, is it a good thing to have a vacant lot in a residential neighborhood? Does that lead to some issues and problems?
It's always better to have a lot that's developed, and when it comes to variances, there's usually two things that we hear all the time. Are you doing something that's going to create a nuisance in the neighborhood? Well, no. I mean, it's a permitted use. It's just another house. The other thing is, are you doing something that's going to create a traffic jam? Namely, in this day and age, it's truck traffic that is the sensitive issue, and the answer to that is no. So, you know, again, I don't see the detriments to giving a little bit more on the building coverage end, as opposed to trying to fit a house that would conform, that would probably not be very functional.
And do we also satisfy the RSIS in terms of onsite parking?
Yes, we have two off-street parking spaces.
Okay. So, in your professional opinion, I think you've talked about the benefits. You really haven't indicated any detriments, and in your professional opinion, does it promote sound planning to have this lot developed with, albeit, a de minimis variance for lot coverage?
Yes, I do.
Building coverage, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything further.
Hey, another chance. Any questions? We're open to the public. Does anyone want to ask any questions about this application or make a statement? We'll close. I don't know if you have too much more to say.
No, I don't, Mr. Chairman. I think I gave my summation before, so I don't really have much to add. I mean, obviously, we appreciate the input and the comments that came when we were here last time. We hopefully address them for you. We still obviously require variance relief, but I would, in the scheme of things, I would suggest that it's rather de minimis, and I think we've satisfied the planning proofs that are necessary.
Okay, then we'll entertain any discussion or motion. Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve ZBA-23-00024, with all the conditions that were discussed, including a lot consolidation that I don't think was discussed.
That's fine. We're okay with consolidating.
We need a second.
I'll second. Sharabithia?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Basim Verdas?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Oh, yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good seeing you, and have a good holiday. Thank you.
Good luck with the project. Sure I have the right? Okay, Stein Assistant Living, ZBA 230020, Minor Subdivision, C and D variances, in which the applicant proposes to subdivide into two lots. Property 360 Demott Lane Somerset, block 386.07, lot 54.06, in your R20 zone.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, your record Larry Calley?
Who's the mic? Who's the mic?
Can you hear me?
Who's the mic?
I have such a terrible voice. This is going to be terrible for everybody. We want to get an approval tonight, Christine. Mr. Chairman, members, Larry Calley, on behalf of the applicant, the Wolf Campus. We think we'll be relatively brief this evening, Mr. Chairman and members. We'll tell you what we intend on doing, who's going to present, and what we hope to accomplish tonight, but this is a very light version of the application that was approved by this board about six years ago now. If members of this board recall, in 2017, we developed the office administrative building on this property, beautiful two-story office structure. Adjacent to it is the existing six-story independent living structure on the property. They're both on the same lot, the same physical lot number. They have different physical addresses. One is 330, one's 360, but they're on the same lot. Now, the problem with that is, the applicant cannot sell one of the properties without the other. The applicant cannot finance one of the properties without the other. So, this is what's effectively known as a financial subdivision. It's a lot line that we're hoping to create, an invisible line through the property, where the independent senior living structure at six stories is on one lot, and the office administrative building's on a different lot. There is no construction proposed. There is no new development proposed, no different or new uses proposed, no new parking, no new nothing proposed at all, except for this invisible line that we propose to draw. But with that invisible line comes some relief, because the lot no longer technically will front on a public improved roadway. If the board recalls, you come in through Levinson Boulevard, which is part of the Wolf property, and you make your way around the campus from there. The line that we are drawing effectively landlocks the independent living structure. There'll be access easements. They can get in and out forever, no matter who owns it or what happens on the property, but effectively, it's technically a lot without frontage on a public improved roadway. So, that's a statutory variance. That brings us back here before the board. There's also a coverage variance, not because we're adding new impervious surfaces, but solely because of the fact of where we're drawing the line, it's a 10-acre property we're talking about in a half-an-acre zone. So, way oversized, however, when we draw the line, the impervious coverage numbers, they change a little bit, and coverages go up, although we're not adding any new impervious surface or any new impacts to stormwater controls. Same thing happens with parking. When you draw the line, now parking is separated between the two, but the parking that's always been allocated to the senior living building is still there. The parking for the administrative building is still there. It's just now on two technical lots instead of one. But beyond that, nothing is proposed at all, except for this invisible line, as we call it, that we're drawing. We're going to have two witnesses, Mr. Chairman. We're going to have our project engineer, Bill Lane. Bill's been on this property for decades now with the Wolf Campus. He's been before this board a number of times on this campus for different projects over the years. And then our project planner, John McDonough, who like, thank you, who likewise has been on his project for many years throughout the varied applications for the Wolf Campus. We think it's very light, the relief, but there's planning proofs nonetheless to put on. So, we have two witnesses, the seating, Mr. Chairman and members. So, before I get to them, I don't know if there's anything that, Mark, anything from you or anything from the staff, before we go to our witnesses, Mr. Chairman, but we're ready to proceed, if you are.
Proceed.
Thank you very much. Bill?
Can you please, I'm sorry, can you please raise your right hand? Do you sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Please state your name and your business address for the record.
It's William Lane, L-E-N-E, and I'm at 261 Cleveland Avenue in Highland Park, New Jersey. Bill, your background and credentials, please briefly, for the board in the field of civil engineering? Yeah, I've been with mental engineering for over 38 years. I've been a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey for over 26 years. I testified in front of probably over 100 boards in New Jersey, including Franklin.
We accept them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Bill, trying to keep it as brief as we reasonably can, and you heard my proffer to the board, would you mind walking the board through the technical details as to what's there today, what's changing tomorrow, and what technical relief that creates on the numbers itself? Sure. I'll be describing stuff that's pretty much shown on the minor subdivision plan in the set of drawings. The property itself's 10 acres. There's about 200 feet of frontage on Demott Lane. As mentioned, the private roadway, Levinson Boulevard, comes into the property. It's about 600 feet long. That services the two-story, 12,000-square-foot office building to the north. There's 60 parking spaces there. To the south is the six-story senior apartment complex, and that has 57 parking spaces. What the applicant's proposing to do is strike a new property line, divide the properties in half, and that's going to be just north of the 57-car parking lot where the senior living facility is. The lot to the north, where the office building will be, will be 5.4 acres, and the lot to the south, where the senior apartment complex is, will be 4.6 acres. The Levinson Boulevard roadway will be extended down to that property line where the senior housing complex is. This way, even though we don't have frontage on Demott Lane, it will have a continuous private roadway out to Demott Lane. With that, as mentioned, the parking spaces, there's 57 spaces now for the apartment complex that's intended to stay, where 80 are required. So, other than the lot line being installed, nothing changes there, and that existing addition is just moved forward along with the variance, because we now have a reduced-sized lot. The overall impervious coverage, we're allowed 25% onsite. Right now, it's 33.2%. So, we strike the new line, the northern lot will be 31.5%, and, which will be a little bit of reduction from the 33.2 overall, and the apartment complex lot will go to 35, 35.3%. But overall, nothing changes, because there are no site improvements. Thank you, Bill. Relatively straightforward application, Mr. Chairman. We make Mr. Lane available to any questions you folks might have.
I have one. It may not be relevant, so I won't be offended if you tell me to forget about it. You're doing everything formally for, you said, financial reasons and things like that. Do you have to stipulate anywhere formally that both properties will forever have access to Levin, to the Boulevard, to get out to the, little things like that? Because everything, I'm assuming that the same owner has ownership of all the things we're talking about tonight, but if you're able to separate it for mortgages and things like that, maybe someday, 20 years from now, part of it has to get sold, and how does that fit in to where there's always a guaranteed access?
That's a very fair question. And so, on the financial part, what you see often is, you drive by a large shopping center pad site with inline development, and then there's a pad McDonald's or something out there, or a bank pad. Normally, always, they're on separate lots. You don't know it, but they are, because they're often financed differently, even if under common or separate ownership. That's the idea here, is to be able to divest the ownership between the office administrative building and the senior living building, which really have no direct sole connection to each other, singular connection to each other, but they're two separate structures. So, that's the reason that you see these financial subdivisions, as we call them. But yes, because one comes the day that Mike, Joe, or Jim purchases one structure, and, you know, Jane or Mary owns the other structure, you still need to be able to get out. So, the access easements will run in perpetuity with the land. The access easements are recorded documents. They're reviewed by your staff and your council. Your council's going to look at the easements. Your engineering and planning staff is going to look at the meets and bounds descriptions and make sure that there's always access in perpetuity to and from Demott onto that lot. So, that, no matter who owns the property, it runs with the land, and it goes forever.
Okay.
It's not like a private road or anything, and then who has responsibility for, like, snow removal and stuff like that?
Yeah. So, that'll probably be considered in the easement. My guess is that the overall campus still manages all that, because for first response reasons, you might need ambulances or first responders coming out to the site for elderly folks that live there. But that'll be part of the agreement, private agreement between the parties. It might work its way into the access agreement as to who's got the removal obligations. Bill can walk you through the mechanics as to how it would happen on the roadway system itself, but the access on that, Levinson Boulevard is a private lane. It looks like a public street. If you come off Demott, it's a very well-developed, wide roadway, but it is part of the Wolf Campus property privately. property privately. That staff, that stem that gets you from Demott down to that building that we're going to technically landlock will always be an access path, pedestrian, vehicular, private, public, for whoever needs to get on and off that property. So again, it's just you're driving over an invisible line. That's really all that's changing here. Bill, I don't know if you can add any color to that comment about, you know, snow removal, but I mean, this is often contemplated when you've got an assemblage of property.
Yeah, and just to throw a little more into that, Levinson Boulevard leads to another access easement that leads to the assisted living facility, which I designed, by the way, back in 1998.
They're dating itself now.
So you have a similar situation, other than the assisted living facility actually extends all the way out to Demott Lane, but there'll never be a driveway there. It's big woods and probably have wetlands and stuff. So you have a similar situation out there that's no different than what we're looking to do.
So we're doing this now. Do you have plans to build something then?
No, nothing's planned. This is fully developed, these two lots. There's the office building on the one, the six-story structure on the other, and there's parking serving both. This is just making two boxes where there's one today, technically, as far as land area goes, which already has two separate addresses as far as the town's concerned, although in order to ever sell, lean a property, you need it to be its own physical lot, which it is not right now.
Counselor, I think it might be beneficial for this board if maybe you want to just briefly go through the prior approval, so maybe that'll help you guys understand what's there now.
Yeah, sure. So the six-story, what I call an apartment building structure, is the independent living structure that's there. That's been there for decades, yeah. That predates, I think, any municipal approvals, at least by this team here. The office administrative building started, I want to say, in 2013. It went through a few iterations of design, and it finally made it to this board in 2017 and was approved by this board for the development of that two-story office administrative structure, which services the various components of the Wolf Campus throughout the campus, whether it be the independent living building, whether it be the assisted living building. Because until that time, all the folks who were working there, whether they be nurses or just staffers, they were within the confines of the various structures. It was very chaotic for them. They needed a building. The campus was able to get it funded through donations. They brought forth a really nice design. It looks like a house. I don't know if you folks have ever seen it, but it's a really beautiful two-story structure. That's what this board approved back in 2017, which is the structure right off of Levinson as you're coming in, two-story structure that's running parallel with you as you come in. That was the approval back in 2017 with no issues. It was developed since and no problem since then. But ever since that date and it was developed, you've now got two principal buildings effectively on the same lot, which is fine up until the time that maybe you want to do something with one and not the other. That brings us here.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, you can move on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we'll call our project planner now, John McDonough. John?
Do I need to be sworn?
Sorry, I was looking at my notes. Okay, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, but nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and your business address for the record.
Sure. Hi, everyone. John McDonough. My business address is over in Parsippany, 101 Gibraltar Drive, and I'm the project planner, still.
Still licensed and in good standing on this?
Yes.
New state of New Jersey?
Yes.
Accepted, he's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, John, you've heard the testimony so far and my proffer. We'll turn it over to you now to discuss the relief sought this evening and the justification for it, please.
Sure. The relief that the applicant is seeking is very common in a planned development, be it a campus-type setting, be it a business-type setting, a corporate park, a shopping mall, a retail center, an industrial park, where we see lots carved up on the inside of the greater campus, and the protections are in place to ensure that it acts and functions as an integrated whole with those cross-easements that Mr. Calley referred to, those legal instruments to ensure that circulation and functionality, utilities will all continue to operate as one thing. Therefore, striking a line where proposed here between the assisted living facility or the senior living facility and the office component, lots A and B, will not interrupt or interfere with any of the functionality of that which is presently there. So clearly, no adverse impacts on the negative side in terms of the balancing that the board will have to apply for the applicant's relief. The clear positives here are that this will add to the efficacy of the existing center that's there now. You heard about the financing benefits of this from a mortgage standpoint, from an insurance standpoint. Having these as two separate lots is just better overall from a management and financing standpoint. It's a technical subdivision. It's very common that we see on larger parcels such as this. The key thing is that nothing will change from a functional or physical standpoint. The actual relief that the applicant seeks, we're here in the R20 zone where the existing senior living facility is not a permitted use, so technically, reducing the land area associated with that nonconforming use triggers the D2 use relief, although we're not, and D2, as this board well knows, is the expansion of a nonconforming use. But this is not a true expansion here. Nothing is physically expanding with respect to the building, the parking, or the land itself. And the land that is effectively available for both developments will still continue to be available for both. So although it's a technical expansion of a nonconforming use, it's really just, again, a technicality. It's not going to violate any of the purposes of planning that would control having adequate lot sizes, which this conforms with, and the reason why we wouldn't want to create a zone line or lot line such as this. The subsidiary relief that the board needs to look at would relate to the C relief that you just heard through Bill's testimony, all related to the lot dimensions. I think they were threefold here. The bulk variance for the minimum lot frontage, 100 feet required, zero proposed on Lot B, and then the bulk variance for impervious coverage on both lots to exceed that 25% increase. But again, there's no physical change to that which is presently there. And then, as you've heard, the parking supply will continue to meet the demand. No change or loss of parking associated with what the applicant is doing here. All said, this is going to remain a community asset. We think it will function appropriately and will be no alteration over that which presently exists. Therefore, the relief squarely lands on the positive side without any substantially adverse impacts on the negative side.
That's all you have in direct from Mr. McDonough, Mr. Chairman?
Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I just wanted, this explains, you know, one term to the board. You've heard the word "technical" being used a lot this evening. So sometimes a planner or an applicant will use the term "techno," this is a technical variance. It's not a legal term. It's kind of a term of art, if you will. Sometimes planners will use it in a way that it's not really a technical variance. You know, they'll say, well, it's technically a variance. It was like, no, it's a variance because you're creating a variance situation. I think this situation, in my opinion, is probably the definition of a whole bunch of technical variances in that, again, as they've stated, they're not proposing any physical development. Every single variance that's being created is by this invisible lot line that's being placed through the property. And, for example, the impervious coverage, you know, the existing coverage, I think, is 33% on the site. That's not changing by virtue of where they're drawing that line. One of these new lots will now be 35, the other one will be 31. Again, the balance stays the same, but technically, now this one other lot needs a new impervious variance. Same thing with the parking. Same thing, frankly, with the D2, this expansion. It's before the board because it's, one of the variances that can only be granted by this board is a D2 expansion of a nonconforming use. You know, the typical example of that is there's a use that is not permitted in the zone. It's 10 acres. They're subdividing it off. Now it's only going to be five acres. Well, that's, you're kind of intensifying that use because that use is now on a smaller piece of property. They're really not intensifying the use. It's still, the same uses are still on that same 10 acres, but now the one use will be on one lot that's five acres and the other one's five acres. So it's technically before this board for that reason. Again, I just wanted to explain that, not just for the benefit of this applicant or the benefit of explaining that, but again, sometimes applicants will use that term "technical," and I think in this case, every single one of them are. But just be careful sometimes when they do that, well, they're not really technical. They're not technical. You're proposing, you're proposing to change something here. It's not a technical variance. And then one comment I'll make is if the board is inclined to approve it, there is a TRC report, so I recommend compliance with that report. There was mention of the variance. So again, the properly function, continue to function as the campus that it is now. There'll have to be cross-access and parking easements. Presumably, there's going to have to be changes to utility and stormwater easements because I think all of those things probably cross lot lines. If all of that is true, staff would like to, would want to review those. We want to make sure that they function the way that the township, you know, for example, stormwater. So that would be a recommendation that prior to filing of the subdivision, its staff would review the easements.
No problem.
Okay. Anything else? That was going to be one of my questions. You can, under review comments on the TRC report. You've taken care of all those?
There's no concerns with any of them. What has not been addressed yet are the deeds because we need to wait for an approval from the board in order to prepare the deeds, they need to be reviewed by the township, as well as the descriptions. That goes for the easements as well. And then the official street addresses shall be obtained from the 911 coordinator. So the street addresses actually already exist, the two of them, but to the extent we need to verify that again with 911 coordinator of the township, we will do so. But they each have their own physical address now. That was a precursor to even getting a CO of the office building. But the items that are not satisfied yet, the applicant has no concerns with satisfying them. We can satisfy all of them as a condition of the approval.
Anything else? We're open to the public. Take care of another technicality, I guess, use the word of the day.
Word of the day.
Is anyone who would like to speak or ask a question? We'll close to the public. I'm going to assume you don't have to summarize everything again.
I want to thank you folks for your time, as always.
And board, discussion or motion? Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve ZBA-23-00020. I don't know if we have any other conditions.
Second.
No.
I'll second.
Carol Bithia?
Yes.
Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Basim Vardas?
Yes.
Michael Dougherty?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you very much, folks. Always nice seeing you. Wishing everybody very happy holidays and New Year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob?
Did we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn from someone. A second. Second. All in favor? Aye. Close. Meeting adjourned.